Good morning. Welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. It is now ten AM, Monday, October the twenty-sixth, and we're here for a regular meeting. Everybody will please rise for the invocation to be delivered by Pastor Bill Coffey with Pine Crest Baptist Church in Silsby. Pastor Coffey?
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, sir.
Father, we come to the name of Jesus today, and we'll just acknowledge your greatness, that you are indeed the one true God. Well, we pray for blessings upon this court today. Lord, I thank you for the county commissioners and the county judges. Lord, I pray that you just give them a double portion of wisdom today and discernment, Lord, as they make the important decisions, Lord, regarding our communities and our county. Lord, we thank you for our communities and our counties, and, Lord, how you've blessed them. Lord, I pray that we continue to look to you, the author and the finisher of our faith. Lord, we love you, and we praise you. We ask you in this, in all things. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Shirley Stevens, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to a republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Item number four is Glenda Austin, County Clerk. Approval of minutes of prior meetings. Good morning, Ms. Austin.
Good morning. That would be a regular meeting on October the thirteenth of two thousand fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer. Presentation and approval of registered claims to be canceled by the court. Good morning, Ms. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me and the liability of six hundred twenty-two thousand, four hundred nine dollars and ninety-two cents. These were the vouchers that were related to the bills that were presented in Commissioners' Court on October thirteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pelt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number six, Deborah McWilliams. Presentation and approval of cash statement.
Uh, the cash report summary and general checking account. We have six hundred sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. And the investment account at Wells Fargo, we have three million, two hundred eighty-two thousand, two hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. And tax quote general account, we have one million, seven hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred fifty-two dollars and sixty-one cents for a total cash funds of five million, seven hundred two thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Move we accept the cash statement.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? Deborah, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Uh, this is, this has dropped our balance lower than the eight million that Wells Fargo requires that we carry?
The eight million at Wells Fargo is lower. I mean, the, the amount is eight million. This doesn't make up the amount that has to be held at Wells Fargo. Uh, it includes everybody's bank accounts, every account in the county. And when I looked this morning, we are at seven point two million collectively with everybody's account.
Okay.
He did say that he would wait two months. We brought that up to him. And this is the first month that I've been running below eight million for the whole month, so.
I just wanted to ask if we get into a situation where they're gonna start charging fees, will you let us know?
I will.
Okay.
I should well.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
Item number seven, Angela Gore, County Auditor. Payment of county bills. Good morning, Ms. Gore.
Good morning. The pre-approved expenditures and transfers for October the fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, were twelve thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. Pre-approved expenditures for October the twentieth, two thousand fifteen, were thirteen thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and eighteen cents. And today, October the twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen, the expenditures for Commissioners' Court are one hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eight cents. The total expenditures and transfers are two hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and fourteen cents. The gross payroll for October the fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, was four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars and twenty-three cents. FICA was three, thirty-one thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and seventeen cents. Retirement was fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents. Total transfer for October the fifteenth, two thousand fifteen payroll was five hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventeen cents.
Move we take the county bill?
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Angela. Number eight is introduction of newly hired personnel by their department head. First, we have Shirley Stevens, the Tax Assessor Collector, here to introduce Shannon Austin, the Deputy Clerk.
Okay, I would like to introduce Shannon Austin. I think most of y'all remember her from when she worked in the tax office previously. I'm glad to have Shannon back, and I look forward to a long, well, until I leave. I'm very, very pleased to have Shannon back.
Excellent. Well, welcome back.
Shannon, you gotta give a speech.
All right, and next we have Sheriff Ed Kane to introduce Deputy Math- Deputy Matthew Neal. I don't see the sheriff, so Lieutenant.
This is Mr. Matthew Neal. Uh, he comes to us originally from Michigan. Uh, he has some experience in corrections. Just got out of academy, so now we're gonna, gonna put him on the streets. And he's gonna be here for, uh, at least thirty, forty years, right?
All right, item number nine, Billy Blackburn, Coons Lions Club. Adoption of Resolution number thirty-one dash fifteen, recognizing November the fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, as Southeast Texas Strides Lions for Diabetes Awareness Day. Commissioner Cooper, would you, uh, read the resolution, please?
I will, Judge. And, uh, just for the record, if I don't do it correctly, it's the judge's fault. He just asked me to do this about five minutes ago. Whereas, the overall importance of walking is to build healthier lives, to raise awareness of the health complications of diabetes, and to provide information on preventing and managing the disease and other related diseases. And whereas District Two S One Lions are working to increase diabetes awareness by sponsoring Southeast Texas Strides Lions for Diabetes Awareness on Saturday, November the fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. And whereas the District Two S One Lions, united with the employees and citizens of Southeast Texas, should be commended for their role in participating in the two thousand fifteen Southeast Texas Strides Lions Walk for Diabetes Awareness. And whereas District Two S One Lions are participating in an international activity with the Lions Clubs throughout the world. And whereas District Two S One Lions, established in nineteen seventeen, is composed of men and women volunteers who dedicate their time to the betterment of our communities and aiding those in need. And whereas the District Two S One Lions are members of Lions Club International, the world's largest service club organization, with one point three seven million members and forty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven clubs and geographical areas. And whereas to join together to raise awareness for diabetes. And whereas the purpose of this initiative is to publicly recognize the importance of improving diabetic health. And whereas to honor those who has, have successfully controlled their diabetes, and to help others to accomplish the management of diabetes, promote awareness for diabetes, and improve the quality of healthcare in Hardin County. Now, therefore, being resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Hardin County, Texas, does hereby proclaim November the fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, as Southeast Texas Strides Lions for Diabetes Awareness Day, benefiting the Texas Lions Camp to enhance their diabetes sessions for children and diabetes seminars for families.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper.
Move adoption of Resolution thirty-one dash fifteen.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts to adopt thirty-one dash fifteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And we have a few members here from the Lions Club. We appreciate you being here today, and we're glad to do this on behalf of the Lions Club.
And y'all don't have to stay for the whole meeting if you don't want to.
But you're welcome to if you'd like. All right, item number ten.
Thank you.
Thank you all again. Carol Fernandez, President and CEO of Catholic Charities of Southeast Texas, regarding the adoption of Resolution number thirty-two dash fifteen, recognizing November the twelfth, two thousand fifteen, as Harvest of Hope for Catholic Charities of Southeast Texas Day. Ms. Fernandez, good morning.
I move we adopt Resolution number thirty-two dash one five.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall to adopt thirty-two dash one five. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Item number eleven, Terry Brooks, Region Four Confederate Clubs and Independent Riders. Adoption of Resolution number thirty-three dash fifteen, urging motorcycle safety and authorizing placement of signage upon and along county roads. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you doing?
Good morning. Great, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Brooks could make it something, filling in for her.
Okay.
Um, you may recognize me from the proclamations that we do each year, trying to encourage people to be more aware of motorcycles on the road. We do whatever we can to try, try and bring awareness. So far this month, in one eight-day period, we had five motorcyclists that were hit. Uh, one actually avoided the collision from head-on. He was still hurt pretty bad. But each one of these, it's been already shown that it was not the motorcyclist's fault. Most of the time, that is the case. We do whatever we can. What we're proposing now is the CLC and I would like to present to each commissioner, five Share the Road Motorcycle Signs. They're twelve by twelve, look just like this, to be placed on roads in the county, non-tax dot, of course. Either they can be put on existing signs wherever the commissioners so desire, or we will actually come out and install the signs, provide the labor and everything to have them put up wherever the commissioners deem that they would like them. Um, if the county has any breakaway poles that we could put them on, that would be great. If not, we will put them out, or we'll purchase them and put them out. This is important enough to us to try and save one more life, one more injury, that we would do this out of our own pocket. So if y'all would accept, like I said, each commissioner would be given five signs, and we'll put them up if you want them to.
All right. I move we accept Resolution number thirty-three dash fifteen.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts to approve Resolution number thirty-three dash fifteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Who should I contact when we actually get the signs in? Which should be very, very soon.
Just, uh, you wanna contact each commissioner?
If that-
Or, yeah, or you could bring them to my office, and I could, I could distribute them out to the commissioners.
Okay, well, like I said, we'd be happy to put them out ourselves, you know. So we'll just, why don't we just kinda teach commissioner and see what their preference is.
Okay, be fair.
We'll tell you the roads, because we have, like, I think I have a hundred and eighty-something roads. But I pick out the five that are-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And if necessary, if you think that there's specific areas that you like, I'm sure I can convince the CLC and I to donate a few more to cover those roads that you feel might help.
Just, just contact.
Thank you.
I will do it. Thank you so very much.
All right, thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Item number twelve, discussion and possible action to reappoint Sam Ashworth as Director of Southeast Texas Groundwater Conservation Board for a three-year term effective January first, two thousand sixteen.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Let's see the sheriff here, so we'll table out on number thirteen and come back to it.
Move table.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt, a second by Commissioner Kirkendall to table item number thirteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number fourteen, Debbie Mendezalvo, Human Resources Director. Explanation of breakdown regarding the twenty-sixteen retirement rate previously adopted in Commissioners' Court on October the thirteenth, two thousand fifteen. Good morning, Debbie.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
This is just a, uh, an explanation, 'cause there, there was a change in the way that we, uh, addressed the breakdown in that last meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And so, uh, her letter explains that, but she's gonna talk to us about it as well.
Okay, on October thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, Commissioners' Court approved the twenty-sixteen retirement rate remain the same as the twenty-fifteen rate, which was fourteen point three-three percent. The twenty-fifteen breakdown was thirteen point nine-nine percent was the employer contribution rate, point three-four percent was the group term life rate, which equaled to fourteen point three-three percent. For twenty-sixteen, the group term life rate decreased from point thirty-four percent to point twenty-eight percent. This is a reduction of point oh-six percent. The group term life rate cannot be adjusted. Since the group term life rate decreased by point oh-six percent, you will have to increase the employer contribution rate by that amount in order to keep the retirement rate at fourteen point three-three percent for twenty-sixteen. The breakdown for twenty-sixteen will now be fourteen point oh-five percent employer contribution rate, point two-eight percent group term life rate. Hardin County's required employer contribution rate for four, for twenty-sixteen is thirteen point eight-four percent. However, last year's rate was thirteen point nine-nine percent, which was an elected rate. By increasing this rate, it will help pay down the unfunded actuarial accrued liability.
All right, are there any questions?
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Item number fifteen, Commissioner Chris Kirkendall, Precinct Two. Discussion and possible action regarding setting a speed limit of thirty miles per hour on Ray Vic Drive in Precinct Two.
Judge, I would move that we set the speed limit for Ray Vic Drive at thirty miles per hour.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Uh, just as a, a point of action here on this, we had a public hearing this morning. We did have, uh, three citizens from Ray Vic Drive that were here. All three were in favor of the speed limit. And in fact, uh, one of them would ac- actually like to see us lower, lower than thirty miles per hour, and we were gonna look into that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner. Item number sixteen, Amanda Young, Assistant Floodplane Administrator. Authorization for County Judge to execute new airport lease for fixed base operations between Hardin County and Mr. Dale Williford. Good morning, Amanda.
Good morning. We have a new lease. Uh, it would be just an extenuation of the old lease, but we did make a few changes, um, for Dale Williford to remain the FBO of the Hawthorne Field.
Do any of the commissioners have any, uh, questions about the changes that were made? They were, most of them are, uh, just to clean up in language that were recommended by the county attorney. We also changed the, uh, uh, description of the property. There were some errors in the, uh, property description before under item number one, so those were fixed by the, you had that survey, is that correct?
Yes, sir. I brought that to court before.
And item number three, the term changed from a five-year term to four years. They just cleaned that up to run, uh, concurrent with the county judge, uh, term in office. And the only change in the, uh, mowing was that, uh, Mr. Williford still has the first right of refusal to mow the property. But if for any reason we're unable to pay for that, we just notify him by October first of any, any year, uh, when we're not able to budget for that, that, uh, service. Other than that, I think everything else was just some, uh, language that needed to be cleaned up. Mr. Williford, do you have anything you'd like to add, or?
No, sir. I just appreciate the opportunity to be able, uh, run Hawthorne Field. Uh, we increased the activity out there, increased the amount of airplanes we can, to the point that we could have eight damaged in a, in a windstorm here recently. When started out there, we did have three tied down outside, so we had some left after the windstorm. Like, that's at least proof we tried to attract people from Hardin County to the airport.
Yes, sir.
And we'll continue to do that.
Well, we appreciate all you do, Mr. Thank you very much.
And just FYI, a couple of weeks ago, we had a walk-through with TechStot Aviation, Robert Jackson, and he said he had one, we had one of the best airports that were maintained in his district, so.
Great job, sir.
Great job.
Good deal. I move we authorize County Judge to execute the airport lease.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seventeen, Amanda Young. Discussion and possible action regarding approval of final lease agreement for the purpose of leasing aircraft hangar space at Hawthorne Field. Amanda, would you like to explain this, uh, new agreement?
Yes, sir. We have a new agreement. Uh, we haven't had any thing since before the hurricanes. Uh, we have three hangars out there that are already built. They were built previously, and we haven't been doing anything with them, so we have a lease agreement to get those reinstated, and then, uh, to build more private hangars. We have about thirteen people that are interested in building private hangars.
Okay, this has gone through the county attorney and-
Yes, sir.
It's been approved.
Many times.
A lot.
Yeah, a lot.
Several times.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda, and thank you again, Dale. Item number eighteen, Esther Scarborough, Floodplane Administrator. Presentation of fourth quarter fiscal year two thousand fifteen report and annual report per pre, uh, by precinct. Good morning, Ms. Scarborough.
Good morning. On the fourth quarter, FY two thousand fifteen, um, I believe you all have it in your packets. We have a list of, um, from Mr. Cooper, Precinct One, sixty-four permits were issued. Mr. Kirkendall, Precinct Two, sixty-four permits, and we did check that to make sure that they were, I thought that was kinda odd that it came up like that.
Yeah.
Mr. Pelt's Precinct, uh, Precinct Three, ninety-three permits. And Mr. Roberts, Precinct, Precinct Four, thirty-two permits, for a total of two hundred and fifty-three permits for that quarter. Then on the annual report, and Precinct One for Mr. Cooper was two hundred and thirty-six permits. Precinct Two, Mr. Kirkendall, two hundred and ninety-eight permits. Precinct Three for Mr. Pelt is two hundred and thirty-nine permits. And Mr. Roberts, Precinct Four, is one hundred and forty-eight permits. And you have a list of all of those. Uh, and also, I've talked with, uh, Mr. Roberts the other day. If any of you have an extra map showing your precincts, 'cause all we have is the old one, and if we could have the new one showing where your, your boundaries are, that would help us a lot in trying to determine who has that, um-
You talking about the nine-one-one road index book?
No, sir. We have that, but on, um, on like Highway three twenty-seven-
Large, the large map.
The large map, yes, sir.
We could get the planning commissioner to print you one up for your office. How's that?
Okay. I didn't know that there was one until I talked to him the other day, so I'd asked before, and we just had that old one.
We only got one.
And so that's, that's it. We'll do that in three months.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Item number nineteen, authorization for County Judge to execute a contract for court collection services between Hardin County and Graves Humphreys Stall Limited for Justice of the Peace Precinct Five. Uh, if you'll remember, during all the, uh, during the budget workshops, Judge Minton had asked to change software. That'll actually be the next line item on the agenda. She had also asked to change the, uh, collection services from the, uh, MVBA to, uh, whoever, uh, Net Data. It's actually Net Data, but they have a, a different name for this part of their business, I believe, is the way I understand it. So, uh, she has presented this to the county attorney, and the county attorney has, uh, read over it and has blessed it. And if the court so wishes, uh, I'll be glad to execute it on behalf of Judge Minton.
Judge, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
At the time of, uh, budget workshops, uh, and it was a lack of knowledge on my part, I was just under the impression that the, uh, software would be changing. I didn't know we would be, uh, changing collections, uh, companies. So, uh, can you advise if there is a, uh, does this go hand in hand, or, or do you have, if you get their software, you have to go with their collections?
Well, I don't see Judge Minton here, so I'm gonna try to answer this, and if we need to table it until she's available to come to Commissioners' Court, we can do that. But I do believe that the price they gave us for the software was based on the, uh, collections part as well. Think it went hand in hand.
Well, that was, uh, like I said, that was lack of knowledge on my part. I would be opposed to changing collections, uh, but that's just my input.
Yes, sir. Any other commissioner have any input before? Okay. Is there a motion or, or not?
I move we execute the contract.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall to execute a contract for court collection services between Hardin County and Graves Humphreys Stall Limited for Justice of the Peace Precinct Five. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Item number twenty, authorization for County Judge to execute a contract for Icon Justice of the Peace Case Management IRA Internet Records between Hardin County and Net Data for Justice of the Peace Precinct Five.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-one, Misty Whitney, Purchasing Agent. Authorization for County Judge to sign copy of your lease agreement with Xerox Corporation for County Clerk's Office and Tax Office.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Misty, is this one agreement for both offices, or is this two separate agreements?
Two separate agreements.
Do we need two separate motions for this?
I don't think so.
No?
I wouldn't think so.
Okay, so this is, this motion includes signing two agreements. One for the tax office and one for the clerk's office. All right. Is that okay with you, Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-three, Misty Whitney. Discussion and possible action regarding results of proposals received for proposal, for professional appraisal services related to Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program, DRS number zero-one-zero-zero-two.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Proposals for professional appraisal services were opened on Friday, September the eighteenth, two thousand fifteen, at two PM in the purchasing departments for an office. Trudy Unruh and myself were present. Proposals were submitted by Bishop Real Estate Appraisers, Inc., and Valbridge Property Advisors. Um, they were evaluated, and our recommendation is Bishop Real Estate Appraisers.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-three, Misty Whitney. Discussion and possible action regarding results of proposals received for professional acquisition services, excuse me, related to Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program, DRS number two-two-zero-zero-zero-two.
So moved.
Second. Does Misty need to provide the, uh-
DR number.
The report? I think I need to read the proposals.
Okay.
Um, sorry.
It's okay.
Proposals for professional acquisition services were open on Friday, August the seventh, at two PM in the Commissioners' Courtroom. Erica Cooper, Trudy Unruh, Unruh and Judge McDaniel and Jack Bergeron were present. Proposals were submitted by Bishop Real Estate Appraisers, Inc. His was really more of an appraisal proposal. It, it wasn't an acquisition, so we kinda knocked that one out. Spitzer Associates and JAMA Group, and after evaluation, um, we recommend Spitzer Associates.
Okay. Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Are both these contracts ready?
Close.
Close. Okay.
The appraiser one is done.
We've got approval to move on them as soon as we can, uh, get the contracts.
All right, item number twenty-four, Misty Whitney. Discussion and possible action regarding letter received from High Tech Air and Water Purification Systems, LLC relating to disclosure of cleaning process.
This is their sole source letter. Um, we were not for a pos, request for proposal for mold sanitation services. They were the only ones that responded, and they, uh, did say that they were sole source, and according to the local government code, I have to bring it before you and the Commissioners' Court have to order.
Now, what, what step is this? So we have to order acceptance of their sole source letter in order to accept their proposal. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay.
I would like to be watched.
See a copy of that. Here's, it's right here.
Judge, whenever we went out for, uh, proposals, we actually broke this down, which I'm sure Misty was going over it on the next item, but we actually broke this down in the two areas. One was for the, uh, purification system, which she just explained that this company was, uh, the only one, so we got a sole source, uh, letter from them. The second portion, uh, and if you wanna wait until we bring that item up, we can, but, and I'll explain that, however you wanna do it.
Yeah, I guess let's just address this item first, and then we'll move on to the next item. Uh, Misty, let me just ask one question. Since we only had one response to the RFQ, um, if we didn't have the sole source letter, would we have to go out for bids again to try to gain more bids, or the, or that, is that the reason for the sole source letter?
Uh, I think-
Because we only had one response?
Right, partially. And it would be up to Commissioners' Court who to award to, but, um, but this is, it just helps.
Okay.
We have gone out for bids.
Yes, sir. We did. And they were the only, and we had multiples come and look at the building. It's just that they, this is the only one that does this type of cleaning.
Okay, so that'd be no different than going out for materials and only have one bid.
Right.
Yeah, so I mean, we could, we, we don't have to go out and bid.
Okay. Do we have to accept this sole source letter? Does the court have to order acceptance of this letter in order for the committee to evaluate those, that one proposal that was received?
If we're gonna award them on sole source, yes, sir, but-
Since we went out for bids and they were the only respondent, we could still, uh, award the bid to them as they only responded if we chose, choose to do so.
Some of the others that responded, tried to respond, said they couldn't- Some of the others that responded, tried to respond, said they couldn't, they couldn't sanitize the building in the same way that we were asking for.
Okay.
So that's the reason.
The technology that this company has, and they made a presentation in court, is, it's an ongoing system. Whereas the other companies, if I understand it correctly, would do a one-time cleanup, follow-ups, and things like that. I mean, they don't, the other companies can't provide the services that this company can provide, and we've done research on this and got different recommendation letters and things like that, so.
Yes, sir.
Now, are, do we have a proposal in hand, or do they have one prepared that's ready to be opened and read, except that they have to have this non-disclosure deal before we can look at it?
No, sir, it's been opened and read.
Oh, it's been opened and read?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well then...
But not by the committee, just by...
Right.
Your office, is that right?
Okay, so it cannot be shared with the court then until we...
No, it has been read by the committee.
Yes, we did, we did go over that, we met last week, and we went over that as well as the HVAC proposals.
But then I would assume that we could not select them and use their services without this.
I think what's going on is some of the other companies are concerned about them not being qualified to bid, and they didn't submit bids. And I think that's the reason that Misty requested from this vendor their sole source letter. And in order for that, for it to be accepted, it has to be accepted by Commissioners' Court, not by purchasing, according to the statute.
We had mold remediators respond that wanted to tear out things and do it that way, and that's not what our request for proposal asked for.
Well, then, I'm trying to get my arms around this, did we send out a bid specification that eliminated other bidders?
Not intentionally, right?
Well, make sure they're, of course, intentionally or not intentionally, that'd be like sending out specifications on a grader that only say one vendor could meet.
Correct, we didn't realize that nobody else could meet it when we sent it out, until we got one proposal.
I really think we need an opinion from our county attorney on that.
Did, did you, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we already have contacted an opinion from the county attorney in reference to the sole source letter.
I have not spoken to her about the sole source letter, because I didn't have it when we, when I talked to her about the proposal, but I'll be glad to do that.
I would think some words, we would have to, under state bidding laws, we would have to justify the absolute need for a proprietary process that no one else has versus conventional processes.
Yes, sir, if I, if we would have had the sole source letter before we went out for bid, according to the local government code, you all could have made the order, and we could have not, we wouldn't have to go out for bid, that would have been an exemption, but I didn't have it before, so I'm bringing it to you now.
I would like to see some clarification before we sign the letter, or accept the letter, or hire it to go.
Okay.
But we do have prices in hand that if the letter passes muster, we can look at them to say yea or nay, whether we be...
There are proposals, and they are negotiable.
And you cannot share those prices until we...
Yes, sir.
Makes it interesting.
Yes, sir.
Yes, it does.
But we'd like it to be legal as well as interesting.
Well, Misty spent a lot of time researching this, and I believe that she thinks this is what we need to make sure that we're doing the right thing, but let's do, run it by Rebecca and make sure, before we finalize that, I do agree with that.
And...
Does everybody...
Let me ask this, so, let's see, when will our next meeting be? I, I... Okay, I assume we're wanting to do something along those lines to move this project forward.
Yes, sir.
If she gets that here pretty timely, I'm not opposed to coming to a special meeting to look at it.
All right. So you'll talk to Rebecca within the next few days and then get back with us? So on item number twenty-four, would you like to table that? Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt to table item number twenty-four.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-five, discussion, Misty Whitney, discussion and possible action regarding results of proposals received for mold sanitation services and H V A C modification, repair, replacement for annex building project. And I think Commissioner Cooper had something he wanted to address regarding this line item.
You want to go over the, the companies, and then I'll go into detail.
Yes, sir, I have to... Proposals for annex mold sanitation services were opened on October fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at two o'clock in the Purchasing Department's front office. Erica Cooper, Trudy Unruh, and myself were present. Proposals were received from High Tech Air and Water Purification Systems, L L C. Proposals for annex building, H V A C modification, repair, replacement were opened on October fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, at two P M. in the Purchasing Department. Erica Cooper, Trudy Unruh, and myself were present. Proposals were received from Detail Company, L L C, and Streamline Mechanical.
All right, and Commissioner Cooper, you were the chair of the committee that evaluated these proposals?
Yes, Judge, myself, Judge Brewer, and Judge Ingram met last week and went over these. We went over the, the mold sanitation services first, which we only had the one company, we did review that, and pending last action by this court, we're tabling that, so we'll take that up later. The second portion of this was the HVAC modification, repair, and replacement. Like Misty said, we had two companies that bid on that. We had an evaluation form that was provided to us by the purchasing department that we went by for guidelines, and came to a unanimous decision on which company... Are we at liberty to express any monetary figures or anything?
If we're gonna negotiate, which I think we did want to talk to them about price, and we're not supposed to, no, sir.
Okay, and can you refresh my memory, Diatal? The, the committee came to a unanimous decision on Diatal Company, L L C.
And Misty, I believe in this the company we received the budgetary figure from originally?
Yes, sir.
Before we went out for bids?
And do we have that figure?
The budgetary figure was a hundred and seventy-five thousand, but the bid, the actual firm bid came in higher than that, and I think that's why they're talking about negotiating.
Now that, now that we have selected them based on the criteria that was on the evaluation form, which included their price and, and other things, we're gonna try to set up a meeting with them, sit down and see about negotiations on, on price and other things, so.
Okay, so this is basically information on...
Yes, sir.
Do we have to accept that before negotiations can happen? We have to accept them as the, as the low bidder, or as the preferred vendor?
Right, and if we can't meet, meet an agreement, reach an agreement with them, then we would move to the next one.
All right, so we would, we would accept them as the preferred vendor...
This is the same way it was...
Yeah, acquisition.
Yeah.
Pending negotiations on price.
I move we accept Diatal Company, L L C.
Say it.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Chief Evanport, are you gonna present item thirteen, or is the sheriff coming back?
He will be here in about two minutes.
Okay.
I'll be right back.
Judge, back on this one here, this is just a question on procedure.
On number...
Twenty-five.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I assume, of course, twenty-five and twenty-four would have to tie together. And so basically, when we say we're accepting their proposal, this is work that we're not, I mean, we're not committing to this work.
Well, we're not accepting anything regarding the proposal on the sanitation services, this is just the H V A C modification, repair, replacement, which is the Diatal Company, L L C.
I made sure that I indicated that the mold sanitation services had been tabled, and we would not take action on that, but we are on HVAC.
That is present equipment that we have over there, right?
Yes, and, and their, their proposal specified specifically exactly what they would do with our equipment.
I guess what I'm trying to get my mind on is if we decided to go the new route, then none of this would be needed, is that correct?
In our request for proposal, we can, we can get out of it at any time, there's a clause in there that says we can reject all bids.
We have the right to cancel out at any time?
I believe so, yes, sir, I can go back and research it.
Yeah, we need to research it, because...
In other words, if we don't do the sanitation, then we won't need the H V A C work.
Yes.
So the only reason we're accepting that now is, and I, and I wonder if maybe we need to go back and modify the motion that was made by Commissioner Cooper, that we're accepting Diatal Company, L L C, pending negotiations of the pricing, and whether or not we accept the proposal for the sanitation process.
Whether we accept, or whether we decide that we're gonna remodel the old building versus building new.
Who's second, my motion on twenty-five?
Mr. Kirkendall. Let's take a short recess until Commissioner Kirkendall comes back.